Are we ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the September 21st, 2020 School Board Meeting. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public participation. Does anyone have any public participation this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to item number three, which is project-based learning K through six in the Merrimack School District. I'd like to welcome Kim Yarlet, Johanna Maxwell, Kate Murva, Stacy Pap, and Catherine Sabadi for the presentation. John, you are live on a mic.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, and Kim and your team for being there tonight. I wanted to begin tonight with a series of reviews that we do throughout the year on positive things that are happening, happening with our curriculum across the district. And I've spoke over the last several meetings about our instructional model and all the work we've done around creating essential learning competencies and all the design of learning that we've happened. Those were all wonderful things, and I commend all of our educators for the work they've done. And to take it a step further, is actually take our essential learning competencies and put them to action and create curriculum out of them and create projects out of them. Really, we turn to our experts within. And we turned to Kim and her team and talked about project-based learning. And something that's been going on at Reed's Ferry for a couple of years now that has been an exemplar, we thought, can we take this across the district K through six? And with the work with Kim and her team, we've begun this effort. And I'd like to turn it over to Kim now and certainly hope that this brings some clarity to some of the work we're trying to do at our elementary level. So, thank you, Kim.
Thank you, John. Hello, everyone. Kimberly Yarlet, Principal of Reed's Ferry School in Merrimack. And I want to thank John and my colleagues because over the summer, as we were looking at all the different designs that we were going to do for our summer instruction, one of the things that we really wanted to address, and as John Fabrizio and Mark McLaughlin had promised to the public that whatever the students were doing on their off days, meaning that they weren't receiving direct instruction from their teachers pre-K through six, we wanted to ensure that whatever they were doing was really meaningful and relative relevant and that the students could participate in the learning opportunities with a certain level of independence. And that's when John invited me and my team to share the work that we started in 2016. And I want to give credit to some of the August academies that preceded our work in 2016. And that was our focus on really wanting to bring some STEM and some STEAM into our instruction as well as some inquiry. And although John's referring to it as project-based learning, that is actually a coined curriculum. So, it's, we don't call it project-based learning because we don't follow the exact guidelines of project-based learning, but it's really hard for us to name it because it's not any of the defined initiatives that you're probably most familiar with. Nancy Rose and I had gone to the World Education Summit in Italy, and I had brought back to the team some work on design thinking models. So, basically, what we were, what we have done is engaged in lots of research that looks at components of inquiry, STEAM, project-based learning, and design thinking models. And we started this initiative where we actually, pre-K through four, developed units of study which would occur over six to eight weeks that would address the science and social studies standards and to be able to offer more opportunities for writing. Because what we found is that we had a very crowded calendar and that we were teaching science through reading about science and not doing science. And we looked at the need for more time to actually address all of the many standards, including the social studies and writing and the unified arts. So, what we call our project that was designed, considering these kind of merging of these different philosophies, is we call it our Integrated Practices. And so, when we were looking at the need for what students would be doing, we wanted to make sure that what they would be receiving is something that, again, they can do independently, that it was relevant, and that it was rigorous. And John was quick, and my colleagues were quick to identify and acknowledge the work that we had done at Reed's Ferry School and had asked for some professional development on, first of all, what is, what is our IP, what are our IP days? That's what we call them for short, IP days, our Integrated Practice Days. What, where would, how did the concept come about? I've given you a little bit of background. What's the purpose? What are our success stories? And how can we capitalize on that in order to share out our practices? Because we didn't want our other sister schools up to J. Muse to reinvent the wheel when we saw something that was really effective and really working at our school. So, we, a whole group of teachers basically looked at our journey and sat down together over the months preceding August Academy this year and said, "Let's talk about our journey. Let's talk about where this, where and how this idea originated. What were some of the growing pains? And let's go to the process and product." And so, they each did several-hour Zooms with their grade role-alike colleagues. And a fourth-grade teacher, Noel Rosenzweig, offered the professional development to J. Muse, to the fifth and sixth graders. And everyone took a grade and presented a PowerPoint and put all the information up on team sites so that it could be accessed and are continuing to roll this out with their grade-level role-alike colleagues. So, that was kind of the process, the definition of our integrated practices. And again, when we talk about defining it, when we talk about our IPs, we really talk about taking the standards across the content areas, social studies, science, ELA, and math standards, as well as looking at the Unified Arts and how it is that we have merged standards. And it's a very, very, very complex process that we use. We really did a lot of reading, a lot of research, looked at McTae, some of his work, looked at essential questions, and made sure that what we were designing was not something about like, "Well, let's talk about chicks," or "Let's teach about apples," but to talk about life cycles and really get that really rich, rich, enduring understanding for students. So, I'm going to turn to my colleagues and let them take you through the journey, which we brought our teachers through at August Academy this year, so that you have some knowledge of what the students will be engaged in pre-K through six when they are in their non-site, onsite, or non-direct teaching sessions. So, I'm going to call up, I believe, Kathy Sabadi. You're on.
Hi, thank you, Kim, and thank you for having us tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I know some of you, I've had the privilege of teaching your children or serving on district wellness with you. But I'm Kathy Sabadi, and I teach kindergarten at Reed's Ferry. And I'm going to give you a little bit more about background about IP, integrated practices, and why we started doing it. So, as Kim mentioned, there was a need. We were certainly always teaching science, social studies, and writing. I don't want you to think those weren't being addressed. But we felt that we needed to do more. There needed to be more time and more rigor. And so, with our IP, we were able to do that. We were able to combine and integrate some subjects to get those lessons, the attention, and the rigor that they deserved. IP days really enabled the teachers to create rigorous lessons incorporating multiple subjects, and not just the core subjects, but also some of the art subjects. So, just as an example, I taught first grade one year, and one of our social studies topics was community. So, even though that's a social studies standard that we're addressing, the students, for their final product, they had to do some nonfiction writing. We do nonfiction writing in first grade. They had to read some nonfiction texts. So, again, we're incorporating those reading and writing standards. We were very fortunate. Our librarian, Lori Pezzo, was able to block off some time in her day that day so students could go down to the library and do some research skills. So, they're learning research skills, they're learning library skills. Our computer teacher, Mrs. Lewis, helped them with some technology skills. We also, they had different choices for that particular lesson, how they wanted to show it. And some of them actually did an art project. I had a couple of students, actually, that wrote songs. So, they're incorporating a little bit of the arts. And I think it's worth mentioning, too, at Reed's Ferry, a couple of years ago, I think it was two or three years ago, we started, our music teacher started an arts integration committee, and they've been looking at how to incorporate the arts into lessons. And last year, they, we actually started looking at, we picked one IP from each grade and looked at how could art and music and, you know, PE, computer, library, really be incorporated? Because on the committee, there are classroom teachers. I've served on it. We've had special education teachers and some of the Unified Arts teachers. And obviously, with COVID, we didn't get quite as far as we wanted. But it's something that will hopefully continue in the future to really look at, how can we integrate not just the core subjects, but the arts as well? Because those are so important. IP really goes along with UDL. In fact, at August Academy last year, at one of our, after one of our first sessions, one of our intercessions to UDL, I was sitting with a couple of my colleagues at lunch and we're like, "This UDL stuff, it really sounds a lot like IP. Is it the same thing?" And, you know, we know it's not exactly the same thing, but a lot of it lines up so nicely because there's the student voice, there's the student choice. Students are getting what they need, the differentiated instruction. So, it was really nice for us to see that this IP things that we were doing, you know, went along, merged so nicely with the UDL. And then, again, I'll talk about it a little bit more later tonight, but the importance of student choice and student voice. The student choice might be in how they choose to go over the activity. It might be in the materials. It might also be in whether they work by themselves or in groups and pairs. And as I said, we'll get into that a little bit later. And I'm going to have Kate Murva come up in a second. We talked about how we were able to find time in the day to do this because we couldn't, you know, how we were able to magically find more hours. We were fortunate, as we started rolling this out, that Kim and our administration allowed us to use some of our PLTs because this did take a lot of planning and a lot of involvement. So, that was definitely something that was very beneficial to us. So, Kate's going to come up and tell you a little bit more about the logistics. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Hello, everyone. So, I'm Kate Murva. If you don't know, I've been at Reed's Ferry for 13 years, third and fourth grade. I absolutely love it. And one of the things I'm so passionate about right now is doing our integrated practices and projects over at Reed's. They're just some of my favorite things. And I kind of marked the timing of this with the birth of my son. I came back four years ago from maternity leave, and it was the fall that we were rolling out IP projects. And I remember walking in all sleep deprived to Kim Yarlet's office going, "What? What is this? What are we supposed to be doing? What are these projects?" And she reassured me that I had all the tools I needed and I would be okay. And it was okay. And I realized that this was really some of the coolest work we can do with our students because allowing that voice and choice and really getting students excited about really sort of those essential questions about life and letting them do sort of real-life research and study was just a really fun, fun, fun thing to do. And the high engagement that comes from these projects. This is not like sitting around saying, "Take out the math worksheet." This is, "How do we figure out how to design an entire government on an island?" I mean, it's really, really fun, meaty work. So, to have time to do this, we had to kind of look at our schedule because obviously, every second is blocked with, you know, qualitative amazing things. And we had to see, when are we going to have time for these projects to give them justice? So, we started at Reed's thinking about two-week chunks, sort of that 10 days that students are together in school, and thinking about where in those 10 days could we really sort of scrape out time for these integrated practices? And what you'll see up there in the big chart is you, so we started looking at sort of our literacy core, our math core, and then going, "Okay, once every five days, let's carve out half a day to really say, 'This is integrated project time. This is inquiry work time.'" And then, at the PLT level, starting to decide, "Okay, when are we going to fit in these units? And how many different IP days should we devote to each of these units?" And it's, it's been an ebb and flow. It's been, my son is four now. Every year, we redesign the calendar a little bit. We make those tweaks. Some grade levels realized they needed shorter chunks of time. At the fourth-grade level, we tried last year doing sort of almost a week of IP, sort of like just really throwing the students into full days of doing these projects. And that model worked really well with the older kids. So, it's, it's an ebb and flow. It's a constant change, but really thinking about, "How can we make this important and valued? And value is linked to time." And so, now, I think, my other colleague Stacy is going to be coming up and telling you more.
Okay, so I'm Stacy Pap, and I teach kindergarten at Reed's Ferry. And unlike these girls, I'm kind of newer to Reed's Ferry School. This is my fourth year of teaching kindergarten there. So, my experience with IP coming in was really fun and exciting. It wasn't scary for me. So, it's, it's, you know, hard to hear there. So, that, what I'm trying to say to you is, by the time I got there, it was exciting and fun. And so, what I want to do now is just pour into telling you more about that process and designing those integrated practice projects. Like Ms. Yarlet shared, there is a lot to it. So, but the moment I started this process with my team, I could sense the, "This is fun. This is going to require a lot of collaboration amongst your colleagues, but the end product is so much fun to see in action with the students, as you guys are sharing." So, the very first step in designing your integrated practice is your essential question. And I am actually currently taking grad courses at SNU for my master's in education. And we have talked about this in my classes recently. So, it's been really exciting for me to put that into practice because when we think about an essential question, you really want to make sure that, you know, it is something that is interesting and relevant to the kids. You want it to be a question that they want to find the answer to. So, that's super important to get their ownership in it and excitement about it. Also, that essential question needs to be an open-ended problem with multiple solutions. We don't want those simple yes or no questions. We want a question where the students are going to find multiple solutions to find the answer, and it's okay. And so, that's something that's really fun to see in our kids as well. Also, you want that essential question to be something that has a variety of answers, and not everyone may agree upon it. Once again, that's when we get into that deeper learning for our kids, when they start thinking outside of the box. "Well, I think this is the answer, but you think it's that answer, and it's okay." Like, there are, you know, multiple solutions. So, that's important, too. So, another important factor of an essential question is making sure that talking about that student interest and that it causes them to raise their own questions, it might be a little controversial. The topic might cause some conversation among your students that they don't agree on, but that's okay. They're going to listen to each other and learn that way as well. And also, you want it to be something that is a real-world problem. I don't know about you guys, but when I am learning something new and it has to do with the world around me, it's more exciting, I'm more engaged in it. So, that's something that, when you're really picking that essential question in this design process, we look at as educators. Is this a problem that's real to them, that they're going to relate to? And then, also, an important component of an essential question is, we want to make sure that that collaboration is happening. We're allowing kids to work in teams. We're allowing students to have conversations with each other. And the last kind of major one that we have here on the screen is, you want to, just like we've been talking, it needs to include multiple content areas, not just one. We're not just talking about something that hits social studies or science, but you want it to be learning that takes place in more than one content area. So, on the next slide that we're going to show here to kind of put it into action, is you can see some examples of essential questions. So, as you're looking at these, we really tried to pick some that are from different grade levels. And we really want you to think about those characteristics that I was just sharing with you. For example, we have up here for grade four, "How do natural events bring changes to the earth?" So, that creates multiple solutions, correct? Nature can cause all different kinds of changes to the earth. So, you really want them to think about that. And the second example we have there, "How does climate affect living things?" So, think about that. There's more than one living thing that the climate, the weather around us affects. So, the kids and students can really dive into what that is. And the last one we hear for kindergarten, one of my favorite, being kindergarten teacher, "How do our senses explore, investigate, and understand the world around us?" So, we're talking about those five senses, which many of you, if you've been around children, you know this, talking about seeing and hearing and tasting and all of those. But now, we don't want them to just name them and recall them, but they want, we want children to tell us, "How do those help us understand the world around you?" So, those are the really important things to think about, that first step in designing an integrated practice project or idea that you have. And so, this is the part that, when I was a part of this for the first time, we rewrite that essential question several times. The first question, when we look at it, we think about, "Okay, is this really thinking about real world? Is this really multiple solutions?" No, that's way too easy. That's just a recall. Okay, so, let's dig a little deeper. And we, we erase it and we write another one. So, it's a really exciting thing to be a part of as a teacher and educator. And so, I've really enjoyed this part of the process when we first start thinking about it. So, on the next slide that we're going to show you, you kind of see what that process looks like a little bit further. So, this is a really good example of a planning page that we use. So, first, we're thinking about the unit. What is it that we want, you know, that we're really targeting? And then, that essential question, or two, sometimes there's more than one. And then, we look into the standards because, remember, we want to make sure that our essential question and our unit is tying to those standards that we are going to be teaching and educating our kids. And you'll notice, there's not just one standard, but we've got language arts, social studies, science, math. And then, we kind of narrow down to the key ideas. What are those projects that we want to use? And then, of course, the assessments, which you're going to hear more about. But right now, I'm going to invite my colleague Kathy to come back up again. Oh, I'm sorry, Kate Murva? Sorry, sorry. I thought it was Kathy. Okay, Kathy? And you're going to see it in action.
So, one example of our integrated practices in kindergarten deals with families. And for this, the culminating activity in the family unit, students, we normally would give them a choice to work in groups or pairs or individually, but because they were focusing on their individual family, for this one, it made more sense for them to work individually. So, the choice they had was how are they going to represent their family? So, as you can see some examples on the screen, some of them chose to draw their family with crayons or markers. Some chose to use paint, which is always very exciting in kindergarten, as well as Play-Doh. They love using Play-Doh. Some, we had the little die-cut paper dolls, so some did that. And Stacy was talking about some of those conversations earlier, and that does happen at the kindergarten level, too. So, as an example, when they were talking about their family, one of my students last year started to put a pet in, and another student was like, "Well, you can't include a pet. A pet's not a part of your family." You know, and you might think, obviously, if you have pets, that you consider a pet a part of your family. So, it just led to an interesting discussion further of what is family? Well, what about those pets? Because they're important. Do I include my grandmother? I don't live with her, but she's very important to me, and maybe she babysits you or, you know, you see her on the weekends. As well as, you know, you might have students that parents are divorced. Well, they have, you know, mom's family, there might be people there and people at dad's family. So, you know, even at kindergarten, they're having some of those rich discussions. So, that's just one kindergarten example. And Kate is going to come up and give you an example of some of the older grades.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, so this is, again, we're going from kindergarten now back to fourth, spanning all of our elementary years. This is how is energy transferred? And this is one of our really fun STEM units that we do in fourth grade, where we start figuring out, you know, when the power goes out in Merrimack, what does that mean? How does that happen? And really starting to take those real-world examples and thinking about closed circuits and thinking about our power lines and our power supplies and green energy. And it's really fun to sort of let kids sort of take it in a bunch of different ways. So, first, we teach with batteries and wires, and we make sure they know what a closed circuit is. And then, we bring in motors, and we say, "All right, how can you transfer energy and make your motor work?" And the kids get to design their own sort of energy transferring robot or machine, and everybody loves making a robot. So, this project can go on for months if we allow it, and they would love to do that. You know, they'd be happy to make robots for the rest of the year. But we try to rein it in a bit. So, every kid gets a motor, gets batteries, gets wires. Some of them work in groups. And really starting to think about, you know, "How can I make my robot move? Can I give my robot a purpose?" A lot of times, we try to apply, you know, "Can your robot clean something? What would that look like? Can your robot draw something? What would that look like? And how can you show that transfer of energy?" Then, can you hook up two robots? Can they work together? Can you look at the, you know, robotics at a large in our country and sort of see, you know, they start looking at like, you know, robots on space and things like that? So, we really start to sort of build off of this. And this is pictures from across the hall in Noel Rosenzweig's classroom, and they were working on their robots on and off during dismissal until about Christmas last year because they just couldn't let it go. They loved the robots so much. And my class, we did these doodle bots where we drew these huge murals, and we had the robots scuttling around the floor, and it was just fabulous. And the engagement that you get when students get to start to build and create, you know, our non-readers can build a robot, and they're excited about it, and they know how to show that closed circuit. Our, you know, ESL students can work with other students and know how to show that. And so, it's a really place where that, you know, takes down any barriers. It takes down any sort of, you know, hierarchy, and it lets every student really shine. And that's been just a fabulous, fabulous thing to see. So, that's one sort of, one of our STEM units. And then, coupled with that is my favorite, favorite IP unit that we use in fourth grade. And this, again, was coming back from maternity leave four years ago. I was told we were doing this project, and I was like, "What? What is this?" But I absolutely adore it. So, this is one where we let, we're studying government. And in the past, it was, you know, you study the different kinds of governments. Maybe you would do a report, maybe you would do a little, you know, PowerPoint. Not anymore. Now, we let them create a government. So, we start with the world, and we say, "All right, find an uncleaned place where you say there's an island." And we let them put post-its all over the globe, and they get to make their own islands. And then, you go, "Okay, now you have to create, you know, a country, a citizens, you know, working together on that island." And so, students have to start thinking about goods and services, start thinking about the roles of each of the citizens, thinking about how the government is going to help those citizens survive, looking at housing, looking at transportation, looking at water systems. And every year, the students take it in a different place and take it further in different places. We've had some students that really get into the engineering of their island and really spend a lot of time with the mapping and the mechanics and the building constructions. We have some students that get really into the cultural aspects of their island and, you know, creating the flag and creating the pop culture and creating the currency. And then, we have some students that really get into the government and really think about, "Okay, how do laws affect the citizens? And what happens if those citizens break laws? And what's going to happen to the neighboring island if there's a trade federation?" Last year, my class sort of created different islands together, and we formed trade federations. And then, we decided the trade federations were going to go to war and what was going to happen then, and how does that impact the role of a citizen? So, that was a really, really fun opportunity for them to really start to think about, "How do we put all this real-world application into creating a government and creating that role of citizens?" And we always get some very exciting conversations. Very passionate fourth graders come out of this project. And it's one that they carry with them. I have students that come back for graduation, the graduating seniors, and they'll remind me about these projects. And they'll say, "Hey, we started working on pieces of this, and now I see it on the wall here in fourth grade." And it only has gotten better and better. So, that's fun. And then, coupled with that, we've addressed all sorts of different standards when we think about these projects. And I know Stacy spoke to this a little bit earlier. When we're writing that citizen government unit where they're creating their own island and the role of the citizenship, we look at reading standards, writing standards, listening, speaking, and presenting standards. It's a really big piece that we want students to articulate their learning and articulate their understanding. So, we really want them to have the opportunity to share what they know and present it. We're looking into the social studies or science standards, and then, we're looking into math. A lot of times with this island project, we have to have students really use mapping skills, really use measurement skills, really use longitude and latitude to figure out, "How is this all going to work?" I had a big conversation with students about population because they're like, "Well, we're going to make our military be 3 million people, but then, we're going to make our citizens be 10 people." And I was like, "That just doesn't add up. Let's really think about what would actually be the role of the citizens on your island." So, really, again, comparing across content strands with these projects and really taking the time to kind of embed that learning, it's so fun. Definitely come and see it. It's happening in fourth grade right now. And I think coupled with that is also then how we assess. And when we assess, we, again, obviously, the students know from the get-go that this is a big deal, and this is a big opportunity, so you take it seriously. We show them the rubrics before we start, like, "This is what we're expecting from you during IP. We're expecting through observations, through your reflections, that you're showing what you've learned." And everybody walks away learning more things, but it's also important for us to sort of make sure that they fine-tune it and that they self-assess. And they go, "Okay, well, I was really wrapped up in making my flag, so I didn't really get to the role of the government, so maybe I didn't meet that part of the standard." So, again, they're sort of working on self-reflection. We're working on sort of posting what they need to be doing, and we're following through. And it's a constant revision of sort of, where do you stand with your project and how could you do better? And a lot of times, we have to focus on the process because sometimes you run out of time. And we have to say, "Okay, where would you have taken this if you had 10 more years?" And they're like, "Well, I would have done this and this and this." And you can sort of see, you know, if they can articulate where they would have taken it the next step, it shows deeper understanding. So, that's just one of the ways we assess. And I think, then I think we're moving on. Yes? Back to you, Kathy.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the results. As I think you've heard through our presentation tonight, you really do see a lot of more student engagement. Students are taking ownership for their work. The increase in on-task behaviors, you don't have to remind students as much to stay focused because they enjoy it. have to remind students as much to stay focused because they enjoy it. They're asking for, you know, when do we get to do IP? When we were planning this a couple days ago, we were talking to Johanna Maxwell, a third-grade teacher, and she was talking about one of their weather IP units, and they had the opportunity to go into the computer lab with Mrs. Lewis and do a green screen and broadcast the weather, and they just loved it and wanted to do it again. When I've taught kindergarten, first grade, do we get to do IP again? When do we get to do it? So it's just, you know, not to sound cheesy and cliche, but as a teacher, it is pretty exciting to see your students so excited about learning. The learning, you know, because they have such ownership and they're interested. It is messy, and I don't, I mean, in the literal and the figurative sense, because you will have, you know, students all over your room, and stuff everywhere, and sometimes out into the hall and in your neighbor's room. But also, this process has evolved so much, as Kate was saying earlier, over the past couple of years. When we first started doing this, I was pretty nervous. And I remember, you know, we were able to kind of dabble into it a little bit with some STEM and some inquiry-based activities. And we were doing an activity in my room, and the students were in groups, and they were doing what they were supposed to, but it was loud, and they were kind of roaming around getting materials. And I remember our assistant principal came in at the time, and I think I must have had this, you know, panicked look on my face. And he could tell, and he went around, he was talking to them, but he came over, and he's like, "I can tell you're nervous, and this is a little bit out of your comfort zone." He said, "But Kathy, they are, you know, they're on task. They're doing what they're supposed to." You know, you might have the side conversation here and there as you have the six-year-olds, but when they were getting up, they really were getting the materials. They were building what they were supposed to be building. So even though it was a little bit loud and messy, there was genuine learning taking place. The process, Kate mentioned this a little bit, about the process is more of the emphasis as opposed to the final result. So just as another example, we did an IP on weather, and the students had to design something. It's basically, they had a stuffed animal. They had to design something to protect the stuffed animal from the weather, so it wouldn't get wet. So at the end, the teachers basically poured water on it. And there was one group, the stuffed animal got wet. And, but they, you know, they watched it, they saw what the other groups did, and I was able to talk to them, and they were able to reflect on it. So even though their project, you know, didn't work, I don't really see that as a failure, because afterwards, when they were reflecting, they said, "Oh, we should have made the, you know, the contraption a little bit bigger, so it covered the animal. Maybe it should have had a handle, so we could hold on to it and get more protection." So in that reflection, so much learning is taking place, and I think that is important, too. We've talked about the excitement, again, the student choice in who they get to work with, whether they work in groups, pairs, individually, maybe the materials they use, or the process. And just another thing is, you kind of get to see a different side to your student sometimes. I had a student a couple years ago who was very strong academically, but had a little bit of trouble working in groups sometimes, and had to kind of learn how to compromise. And we were doing these IP projects. You know, your heart goes out to them, you don't want your students to be upset. But I also think it was good that he learned a little bit about compromising, because as we all know, in life, we don't always get our own way. We have to compromise sometimes. And another example is I had a student a couple years ago who, you know, academics did not come easy to him. He struggled with some of his reading and math, but there was an engineering component. Students had to build something for one of our IPs. And I mean, this kid just went to town, and he was building it. I was just so proud of him, and I went over, and he just looked so happy. It was one of the happiest I had seen him doing work. So it's just really nice to see that side. And also, you know, students are working on social skills. Our speech therapist last year used to like to come down and work with students when we were doing this, because she could build some of those social goals during this time, too. So I think you've kind of heard tonight that we are truly excited about the IP, and you can really see the students taking ownership of their learning, and there's just been so many positive results. So it'll be interesting to see how this continues to evolve and get better and better as we go forward. So thank you. And I believe Stacy is going to come up next.
So to wrap things up here, as we started this presentation with, you know, our current environment with hybrid learning and remote teaching, we wanted to see how could we make IP, you know, be optimized during this time? And as we shared earlier, we were able to present this idea to our fellow colleagues, and it's been really neat to see how that has created this ongoing communication between the schools, and how we can make this work for each other. We have set up Microsoft Teams where we're sharing files with each other, and we're sharing ideas, and able to really do that collaboration that I think has really been great for us as a district to come together and provide that for our students and kind of that common ground. And then, of course, for our students, you know, we, like we said earlier, we've been thinking of how can we make that learning at home be meaningful? So our goal is to create that teaching in the classroom, that research, gaining that knowledge on the topics. And then when they go home, that's when they are being creative, and they're designing, and they're being innovative, and completing those integrated practice projects. So that's kind of our hope in all of this, is that that will help the kids do that when they are at home, and apply some of that, and then bring those projects to us at school and show us what they did. So looking forward for the future here, we're really going to be analyzing the effectiveness of this beyond the hybrid model. We all know and hope this will not be our model forever, but hopefully we can all, across our elementary schools, gain this new knowledge of how we can do this integrated practice and continue it on for all of our students here in Merrimack. So we just want to say thank you for listening to all of our experiences, and hopefully you could hear the excitement, and as educators, how much we enjoy this. And we would love to see if there's any questions for any of us here. And thank you for listening. So.
Any questions? Lori?
So I just want to say thank you for coming. I deeply appreciate your enthusiasm and positive energy. This is a great example of developing 21st century learning. I love the depth of knowledge of this project, the, you know, critical thinking, research, investigation. So really excited of all that work. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Shannon?
Well, I, first of all, I want to say, under these circumstances, I hope you can understand that we were really engaged in this. I mean, you're getting our eye contact. I call it smizing, you know, like the Tyra Banks term, smizing, because, you know, really, it's, you know, it's hard for you, I'm sure, to read, you know, how we're taking the information. So, but it's a lot. And I think, you know, I've been on this board 11 years now, and, you know, I'm going back to the maternity leave comment, saying that we were in the depths of this four years ago. And honestly, it's just, it comes back to, when we find an area for needs of improvement, we identify, evaluate, analyze, plan, and execute. It's not a knee-jerk. It's let's take a holistic look at things. And this is, you're presenting to us that you've been using it for years, but it's something that I think Mark's been working on for a very long time. And it's consistent, but at a very sophisticated level, for everything that we've heard for a number of years at the board, that we can't just know, we have to know why and how. And I think that that is going to be a lifelong... We're building, I think, more lifelong learners, the way we're doing things now than when we were in school, and definitely when our parents were in school and generations before. So I think it's so important that, you know, as we look at how we're delivering an education under any circumstance, that we're not changing that goal. And I think that's so important that you were able to identify and present that tonight. So thank you very much. But the work is never done, as I think we've said so many times here. And we don't do the heavy lifting. We come a couple times a month and do some budgets, and, you know, that's great. Policies, yay. But, you know, we know the heavy lifting comes, you know, from, from the teachers, the administrators, and everyone, every employee of this district that interacts with children, that everyone's kind of on-page and moving each one up one. So, so with that, thank you for your hard work. I hope you realize we are really, you know, taken aback by the, the level of, of, you know, I guess, strategy that is needed to get this work done. And you're doing it under a multitude of circumstances, and for that, I can't thank you enough.
Any other questions? I just have a couple things to say. It's always really exciting to hear and see the innovation that's happening in our district. You know, it's not like we just have all of our materials on a shelf and we pull them down. There's the work that you all are doing every day. And again, this is always a work in progress, right? So it's never like, we're done. It's always a matter of how do we optimize it? How do we make it better? How do we? And it's very clear that you've been doing that for many years. And, you know, in many ways, this reminds me a little bit of the interdisciplinary classes that we have in the high school. And, you know, again, as I think Lori said, 21st century, you know, being able to be innovative and be able to use one subject to help teach another and build upon that. So it's really great to see. And again, you know, clearly, you're very enthusiastic and really love seeing your students grow. So I really, and one of the things that really stood out to me, too, was how I think this initiative is so beneficial, too, for kinetic learners. You know, so often, you know, kids are in classes, and they have to take in a lot of information. So the independent nature of this, I think, allows them to learn more kinetically. And I think that that's something that's really cool, too, to be able to accommodate different learning styles, all in kind of the same project. So just, projects or initiatives, so to speak. So that was something that really kind of stood out to me. So again, thanks for all that you do, especially in these really hard and difficult times where it's so challenging, and, you know, for all that you do to continue to try to work with our students and reach the students, even in the remote situation. So, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number four, which is surplus from the 2019-2020 school year to reduce the 2020-2021 tax rate. Matt Chevonal?
Thank you very much. Normally, over the past five, six years, we've been averaging around $3 million to $3.2 million of surplus to reduce the tax rate for the following year. We just finished up our audit a little while ago. I'm working on the DOE 25, which next meeting you'll, you'll get to sign, and I'll submit. And there's been some talk about, you know, us being in a remote environment and picking up savings here and there, as far as electricity, as far as maybe sub-accounts that we don't need anymore, in the same volume that we did before. I haven't gone through all the details of that, and I will, and when I do, I'll, I'll share that with you. And then I'll share it with the budget committee when they convene their meeting, as I do every single year. But this year, we're looking at returning $4.7 million. So that's around $1.5 million more than in years previous, which will help with the next tax bill going out as we set the tax rate coming up in the fall. So that'll be reflected on the December bill. And I'll give you the details of the particulars, the ins and the outs, and everything you want to know, and a lot that you probably don't want to know. And we'll, we'll talk about that. But that's, that's the number that I'm going to be using when I fill out the MS 24, which is the statement of revenues, and that's the unassigned fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Andy?
So Matt, obviously, this is good to hear. One of the things would be interesting to see if there are areas where we spent more because of the remote learning than we would have. I mean, obviously, it makes sense there'd be reductions, but it'd be really good to understand areas where we're more, because if we have to do remote longer, we need to sort of know that with clarity is where the areas where we might be spending more than before. So this would be a good preview for that, so.
Yeah. There were a few of them before the CARES grant kicked in, that we kind of had to pick up on the general fund. But I will highlight those areas, and they will be fairly obvious to you when you see them.
Right. The concern is, is that if we get, if the CARES funding runs out, but we still have to do things remotely, we just need to understand where that exposure is.
Right.
That's a good point. Any other questions or comments? Okay. The next item is item number five, which is the school reopening update. Mark McGlocken's going to talk to us about the first two weeks and looking ahead.
Thank you. So I think, I expect we're going to be having some version of this agenda item at board meetings, you know, for the foreseeable future, because there's an awful lot that we're learning every day. And as we know, you know, circumstances are changing every day with the virus, and circumstances are changing every day with the way that our school districts and other school districts have to respond to that. So at the moment, we're nine days in, and so we're just on the very beginning of being able to evaluate things like, you know, where are, where are our strengths when it comes to remote instruction? And where do we have to beef that up? What are, have been our strengths when it comes to our hybrid instruction, both live and on the off days? What's been our use, or effective use, of our flex days? And all those things are, are, you know, being evaluated as, really, every day. It's a little soon to come out and talk globally about that, but we will be able to provide information very soon about that when we just have a little bit more experience under our belt. One thing that I think, and I'm going to kind of address that a little bit later in my, in my chat with you, but one thing that I think is something that people might be wondering about is, what would be the metric by which we would either return to full-time, or, or stay in our current situation, or go fully remote? And that's an interesting one, because there are two ways that that question gets answered. One has to do purely with data. And the other has to do, honestly, with, for lack of a better way to say it, the emotional readiness of our community when and if the time comes that we have active cases in our schools. So I'll give you an example. I think I've said this before in the summer, but I think it's worth repeating. If we went purely on data back in March, when schools closed on March 13th, we might not have closed schools then, because there were no active cases on March 13th or prior to that, March 4th through the 13th in Merrimack. And on March 13th, there were four active cases in the state of New Hampshire. And that's according to DHHS. So as a pure function of data-driven decision-making, it doesn't stand to reason that we would have closed when we did. However, that was a period when there was a lot of unknown, there was a lot of worry, a lot of questioning about, well, how bad is this, or how bad could it get? And so our school communities and our parent, parents and students were, and I, you know, having lived through it daily on that, I can speak to the level of tension that was rising every day. And it was just not sustainable at that point to continue. And as you all know, that was Friday the 13th, and then on Monday the 16th, or rather, Sunday the 15th, the governor just shut down schools altogether. So if we look at data now, and I'm going to say a little more about that in a few minutes, but if we look at data now, it's, it's not as good as it was in March. Things are not better in New Hampshire now than they were in March. I don't say that to scare anybody. I mean, I, you can go to the DHHS website as readily as I can and see that, that there, you know, right now, as we long suspected, there is an uptick in the state. That could be due to college students having returned, that could be due to an increase in testing, that could be due to the effects of a summer of people kind of, you know, getting back out into the world, and then the consequences of that. We've seen spikes. What we're trying to do in Merrimack is to do whatever we can to ensure safety within our buildings, and really rely on our community to, to do the safe things that can allow us to continue to operate. And we're really pleased, to date, and fingers crossed, that unlike some of our, you know, neighbor communities in the South Central region and in other parts of the state, we don't, as of today, have any active COVID cases among our, among our staff. Now, I say that bearing in mind that that could literally be changing now. And then I'll have to say something different to you all tomorrow. But right now, that's been the case, and that's, that's better than other districts can report. So when the question becomes, what will it, what will be the metric to determine when or if we change course? Because as I said, if it were just numbers alone, we wouldn't have closed last March. In a few minutes, I'm just going to speak to you a little bit about what some of those other considerations might be. So another question that I think is right to ask, and we're going to, again, have more information about that in the weeks to come, is our technology infrastructure. And about that, in other words, do we have an infrastructure that allows us to maintain our operations remotely for the fully remote students and in the hybrid students who are a couple of days a week remote for them as well? And I really want to say about that, that Nancy Rose and Matt deserve a lot of credit, as does the Board and the community who has been so supportive in previous budgets. Because Nancy and Matt shared with the Board over the last couple of years the ways in which they were recognizing deficiencies in our infrastructure and trying to, long before the pandemic hit, but anticipating a need for more bandwidth, more hardware access, and all that that means in terms of personnel for maintenance. That's been a slow and steady gain over the years, to the point now where we do not have significant challenges when it comes to trying to maintain our remote systems. Again, either for the students who are fully remote or those students who are remote on a couple of days. In addition to that, Nancy Rose has been, again, with Matt's support, because the two work hand in hand, has been, had a lot of foresight when it comes to purchasing hotspots. Kajit would be one example, for, to be deployed in areas of the town that either don't have excellent cell coverage or for families who themselves might not have internet service. And there are a good number of those. So between the infrastructure that has slowly been built up by this Board over time with the guidance from Nancy and Matt, and then some of the more recent developments that have arisen as a result of the pandemic, we, right now, that is not proving to be a huge concern. Now, I don't mean to suggest that every day there haven't been connectivity problems. There have. But the question, that has as much to do with, you know, everybody logging on to something at the same time as it does with what we are, what our infrastructure will allow. And right now, the word is very positive. So I think that we'll have more to say about that, again, in the coming weeks when we have a little bit more experience and data under our belt in this new model. But right now, I think it's a testament to good planning and being ready. And I think our district, in that respect, was quite ready. Relative to technology, I also want to just point out something that the district, that Nancy has been sharing with the Board and the community for some time, and that is that one of the things that we recognized last spring was not a strength of our remote operations, was our multiple platforms. It was very, very hard to manage for our families. It was also hard to manage for our students and for our teachers as well. It didn't really rise to us prior to having to go remote as a big problem, because we never needed to rely, you know, on remote infrastructure quite as much as we suddenly found ourselves having to do on March 16th. But it was clear to us that that became a big problem and an impediment to a really optimal experience for our students and their families in the spring. So Nancy and John Fabrosio and a whole team of Task Force folks, and including certainly Matt as well, worked to identify a single platform that we could adopt that would be, that we could migrate to with relative ease, so that there would just be one platform. And that platform was Canvas. It has the added benefit of having been something that the state offered, which we chose, not because the state offered it. If this, if it had been not the best system, we wouldn't have offered it or chosen it. It was the best system in the eyes of that Task Force, and it had the added benefit of being a no-cost option at the moment. The slight downside to that is that we have had to partner and in some states rely on the state for support in getting that up and running. And not to meant as a criticism, just as a bare statement of fact, that the state has been up to its eyes in a lot of challenges as well. And they haven't been quite as forthcoming with getting us up and running as we might have expected they would have been. However, speaking to Nancy the other day and her speaking to the team, there have been significant developments just over the last few days where you're going to see, and the community is going to start to see, a migration over to Canvas very soon. And when that happens, I think what we're finally going to see is families and students who are going to be able to rely on one platform for assignments, one platform for communication, one platform for a variety of things that multiple platforms in the past have been relied on. So I think that's going to be a really big game changer, and that's going to happen pretty soon. I would also point out, just relative to technology, that, again, Nancy, just because we've relied so much on Nancy because of the remote portion of our two options. And remember, both options have a remote component. We've really had to rely on Nancy and her team to evaluate the needs of our community relative to Chromebooks and the distribution of those. Remember that Merrimack is one town in a state, and New Hampshire is one state in a country. And the United States is one country in a world, all of whom want the same thing. And so Nancy, I will say, Nancy and Matt, again, working in partnership, have really had a lot of foresight. And a lot of the things that all those parties wanted to have and recognized they needed, you know, our team got on it pretty quick. And so we have, I think, I don't have that exact number right now, and I wish that I did, but next time. But between what we were able to distribute last spring and have been able to distribute to this point, we are nearing the achievement of our goal of being sure that every family has at least one device that's provided by the district so that they can achieve their ends. Nancy and Matt have worked on grants that have been won by us so that we can purchase additional Chromebooks that will almost get us to a one-to-one in the relatively near future. But there is a backlog, as you would expect. And I think anybody who's, you know, paying attention to the world right now knows that there's probably an expectation of that. But the good news is that orders have been placed for what we might need to round out our need and that in the coming weeks and months, perhaps, we'll have finished that. But right now, feel like we're in a pretty good place. And in addition to that, John and our principals and all the curriculum Task Force teams have continued to work right up through the day before school start and started, and even to today, in refining our essential learning competencies, which have provided real continuity, K to 12, pre-K to 12. And it has provided an understanding on the part of the parents and the students about, or a better understanding about what it is that they're expected to do. And the schedules that have been developed, particularly for students on remote days, has been in the spirit of trying to help them understand what their responsibilities are for each day, which is, I think, a great improvement over what we were able to deliver last spring. And given all that I've said, I do not mean to imply that we've got no challenges. We certainly do. What I'd be comfortable doing is, in a few weeks, come back to the Board with a little bit more experience and data under our belt to be able to talk to you a little bit more specifically about what is working and what is not. I just want to talk just a little bit about our experience over the last nine days, because it's been interesting. So we have required our staff, as I'm sure many of you in your jobs and people listening have had to do, we've required our staff each day to fill out what we call a work at a station form. And if I could just summarize what those questions are, it's going to lead me to a larger point. So every day, our staff have to answer the following questions. Are you currently experiencing one or more of the following symptoms? Fever, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, respiratory symptoms such as runny nose, sore throat, cough, or shortness of breath? Flu-like symptoms, change in taste or smell? If you answer no, the form allows you to move to the next one question. If you answer yes to any of the following questions, you are asked not to report to work. That is a direct relationship back to the Governor's Emergency Order 2.0, or Stay-at-Home Order 2.0, back on May 1st, 2020, which since has changed multiple times to include, you know, the issues around travel and so on. But anyway, so let's just assume you answered no to that. Then you move on. To the best of your knowledge, have you been in close contact with a confirmed case of COVID-19 or someone who has experienced any of the symptoms listed above within the last 14 days? So perhaps you answered no to number one, but you had yes to number two. Stop. Let's say you answer yes to number, no to number two. Have you had a fever of 100 degrees or greater in the last 72 hours? You must take your own temperature daily prior to reporting to work. If you answer no to the first two but yes to that, don't come to work. I'll tell you what happens at that point in a minute. Let's say you answer no to that. Have you traveled outside of New Hampshire, Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, or Vermont within the last 14 days, or returned from international travel or traveled on a cruise ship during that period? If you said no to the other questions and yes to that, stay home. If you answer no to that, then you just simply, by submitting this form, I attest that the answers are true to the best of my knowledge. I will notify HR. If my answers to the above questions change, even during the day, like I'm fine and now I'm not fine, I will notify HR immediately, and then I will notify HR returning, before returning to onsite work. And then it asks people to abide by social distancing guidelines and so on and so forth. And then you hit agree. The reason I wanted to share that is we are not asking our students to submit that daily, but we are, because in the spirit of community, we've tried to say that, you know, our job is to make sure that our employees are following guidelines, and we're hoping that our families are doing their job to be sure that they're sending us students who are well. And if they're not, taking responsibility for that so that our schools can stay open. And right now, I feel quite confident that all of our partners have really been doing that. However, I just want to just point out, since the start of school nine days ago, approximately 25 teachers have required sub-coverage for a variety of reasons, not least because they've answered yes to any of these questions. And when that happens, we have developed, along with the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, and then we've modified the form to follow a protocol that's quite clear. And so if, you know, if you have no symptoms, but you were, you know, but you know somebody who did, do this. And so we walk through that with every staff member who calls and says, I can't come to work today because of one of these things. It is often the case. And then we determine whether they just need to get tested, and then once they have a negative test, they can return, or whether the unique situation that comes up in the grid requires them to isolate or quarantine regardless of testing. So what we have found is that there are some people who, right now, it's getting to be allergy season, and they might just have an allergy. However, the challenge for our district and all districts has been we don't feel comfortable determining, is that a COVID sniffle? Or is that an allergy sniffle? Right now, we can't afford to risk self-diagnosing. So if a person says, I'm really fine, I just have allergies, then what we've said is stay home. And if that's true, get a note from your doctor that says that you are habitually affected by ragweed every year at this time. And then that can be taken into account. It's still a bit of a question, but at least it helps us to differentiate a little bit. The other reason that some of our teachers might have had to require sub-coverage has to do with childcare. We are obligated as an employer to honor FF-CRA requirements that provide the opportunity for teachers to be absent from their work in order to take care of their children. And in the early days of this, because remember, we had no experience with this back last spring, because everybody was home. And now that people are coming back, we're having, we're seeing the phenomenon where a teacher has a child in daycare, put their child in daycare before coming to school, but their child has developed sniffles during the time at daycare, or maybe the night before, and the daycare has prevented their child from attending. So you see the ripple effect. So the daycare for my child won't accept my child. Therefore, I've got nobody to take care of my child, so I have to call in. And they have every right to do that through the Federal CARES Act. And so, no problem, we have to honor that. And that might be another reason that a teacher would be absent. And mind you, that's only Monday through Thursday, because Fridays are flex days where teachers can choose to be at work or home. So what we've done back in the summer, anticipating that this might be something that would be challenging, I think we had mentioned to you before, but I want to just mention it again. The district has hired and put on retainer 15 floating subs to cover daily fluctuations in absence. We've never done that before. We have a sub-list, and we call, and we just say, we need, you know, you here, and you there, and you there. Subs, like bus drivers, are in short supply. And even in good days, we have a lack of subs. I want to really compliment our HR team for doing a huge push to attract more substitutes into our district. And they've really been successful in doing that. But we also wanted to be sure that we had just our own subs who wouldn't one day be at Manchester West and another day be at Londonderry and then at us, with us, because of all the reasons that we said. We want to just have them be ours. So we've been, up to this point, really fortunate, because on any given day, having those people who are just ours, and they show up no matter what, we tell them where they need to go, we've been able to maintain our sub-coverage fairly well. However, it's also just a point of fact that despite that, we have, each of our principals, and including principals and assistant principals, have found themselves, themselves, covering classes. Sometimes one or two, and sometimes more than that, in addition to their administrative roles, just because of, you know, the need that we're finding. We also have hired, I think we mentioned, five additional nurses. We're looking for a six, so that each building would have two. And they, again, are just ours. They are there to support the school nurse in evaluating students We're looking for a six so that each building would have two. And they, again, are just ours. They are there to support the school nurse in evaluating students who come with symptoms, whether they're COVID or just, you know, stomach aches or what have you. And on days where a particular building doesn't need that kind of support, but another building just really does, then we've been able to shift them so that they can have the support that they need. So, the reason I share that is because there are a lot of things that go into the conversation about what the long-term will be for our, maintaining our current operations. Of course, one of them is just the presence of, of an outbreak, small or large, in any one of our schools. That's the most obvious thing that we'll have to encounter. However, there are other issues, like those that I've just described, which really have to do with our ability to maintain staffing. Here's the worry. When we move into cold and flu season, it's, it's not, I don't anticipate that, you know, every sniffle or headache is going to be COVID, but more and more people probably are going to catch colds and flu. And like I said, we're not able, at the moment, through our own decision-making, but also guided by state DHHS, to diagnose, say, well, that seems like, yeah, you're probably fine. We just can't risk it. So over time, that's, that's going to become potentially a challenge. I don't say that tonight to scare anybody or to, you know, whatever. I think we're really doing pretty well right now. But I feel like I have to be honest with the board and the community about what the, what the challenges are. The question then would be, well, you know, do we, you know, do you need more subs? Well, the answer is yes, but they are not easy to find on good, in good times. They're definitely not easy to find now. And part of the shortage has to do with the fact that the typical profile of a person who chooses to be a sub correlates with the profile of a person whose health would not be great if, you know, if they got sick with something. So, the pool has diminished. But I do want to just, you know, shout out to the, our HR team, who have done really great work in finding those 15 and more. I mean, that's not all we have, but those 15 that are daily just ours. So, so that, that, you know, that becomes a challenge. So I think right now, that's the, the summary of what our experience has been to date. And, and again, it's just important to let the board and the community know that these are the daily realities of trying to manage a school system in the midst of, of this environment. And some things are obvious, and some things are not as obvious in terms of how this, this goes. And so I wanted to shed just a little light on some of the less obvious things that impact future decisions. So, I'm sure the board is going to want me to have updates each, you know, meeting, and so I'll certainly do that. And each time, I'll be able to provide a little bit more information, a little bit more reflection, and a little bit more data about what our experience has been, you know, up to that point. But for now, this is just a brief once-over on what I can share you with the limited data we have from nine days of school. Thank you.
Lauren?
I just have a question. Are we going to be offering flu shots at all of our schools?
So we talked about that recently, and the answer is no. And the reason is because we, right now, we're being very strict about letting people into our schools, and because we have a, you know, so the answer's no. This year, we're just not going to be able to do that. Melissa Gagny has put that information out, or will soon put that information out. It's a service we have provided for, you know, many years, that, along with biometric screenings and so on. But what we're really doing right now is trying as hard as we can to limit the access into our buildings as much as we can, and that's just a wild card at the moment that we just don't feel comfortable.
I was wondering for our, for our staff and teachers?
Nope.
No.
Andy?
So first, Mark, I want to thank you for all the information you shared. It was certainly very helpful to, to hear a lot of those updates, especially around the personnel and the checklist things. I think we all have to, in various places, have to answer those questions, and you sit and think about the way to do it. So the impacts, especially as you observe, will be interesting. Early on, though, you were talking about a bunch of different changes and updates in terms of, you know, like the canvas system and the transition and other things like that. Can you share, and if you're not prepared tonight, the next meeting, share the methodology you use for communicating with staff and parents and students about all these impacts and stuff, both within the schools, but more generally across the district? Because there's a lot of information that's shared either on a Facebook page or here in the, the meeting. There's emails that I occasionally get copied on that are sent to certain parent groups or, you know, certain buildings or whatever, but to me, there's a whole lot of information, a lot of questions that I see that understanding what's being used now and sort of what your, what the plan might be to, to sort of centralize or make more common the way information is shared, I think is real helpful because it's frankly the most important part. You can't, you can speculate on the reason a decision was made, but if it's communicated clearly, you take most of the angst out of the system, so.
So, so, one of the, so I'm going to kind of give you like, kind of a, an answer that's, how can I say, it's going to seem like it's answering in two different ways. One of the things that we've really learned is that there is so much information, there's also so much misinformation, there's so much changing information. I mean, I don't know about you, but I can't keep up with the CDC right now, and, you know, if it's Tuesday, they must be saying this. That's really, I'm just going to use the word a tragedy in a way, because the CDC used to be the gold standard, and now I don't know if it's trusted at all. And that's just, that's a fact. At least it is in my operation of the district. And so, what we agreed as a team is that, at least last spring, and through the summer, that the most significant information, like our reopening plan, or the information about, you know, results of surveys and so on, would be centralized through me. So that, you know, if people had a question, there'd be one place to go. It's, as, as much as our team is outstanding, you know, that game of telephone, you know, by the time something gets repeated by somebody other than the original person, something's lost. And that, in these days, we've found can be devastating, both to the confidence that we're trying to build in our operations and in, you know, the mere fact of trying to get, you know, accurate information out. So, that has been a decision that we've made, that a lot of the information is going to be funneled through one source. We've used, you know, the, the communication committee from several years ago through parent feedback, learned that our system of communicating was, was insufficient in that it didn't use the modes that we have available to us. So, we have now used Facebook. We have a pretty robust, robust Facebook presence. My messages every day from March 16th through May 29th were posted on Facebook. We also realized that we had a tool in School Messenger that was very, very underutilized, and so Matt has helped make that possible. So that's an email, sometimes a phone call, but always an email. The extent to which that's helpful to people is entirely dependent on whether they have signed up for accounts. So that's why Matt and his team have been pushing so much to have people sign up so that they can get accounts. And it's also been true that, and it was pointed out by the families in multiple surveys over time, that our websites were not used as communication tools for those kinds of things. And so every day since then, we've used those to try to communicate using as many tools as we have at our disposal. We are not on Twitter. That might be something that changes this year, but at least we're on those, and that's been a change. More, I'm sorry? And Facebook, yes. More recently, by that I mean this summer, we were talking about what would be the communication mode going forward in the new year. And one of the things that we realized is that our, by realized, I mean, feedback that we've gotten, is that as much as people like to hear from one single source, and I have, you know, a lot of feedback that that was so, they also like to hear from their community. We're a town, it's a community school town, and, you know, as you saw here, the Reed's Ferry community is very identified with Reed's Ferry School, and likewise, all our schools. And so what we've begun to do is begin to decentralize a little bit of the information sharing, particularly now, because when, in the spring, there was kind of no school and, and just general remote school. But now, we're, we're back, even students who are fully remote are remote under the aegis of their school. And so what we've said is we're going to try to migrate to communication from the principal and administrative team to their community. The problems still remain. I, I think that probably some on the team would, would, would agree that, you know, right now, we can almost over-manage the message, but it's because I want to be sure that what MES says about a given thing, and Reed says about a given thing are consistent, to the extent that they have to be consistent. I mean, there are certainly local things that are unique to them. Because what we find is that people talk, and they say, well, that's what they said? Well, we didn't hear that. I wonder what the difference is. And then suddenly, something that might be a relatively easily explained difference becomes, what are we missing? What are they not telling us? And so we've really tried to manage even now, but more and more, we're kind of moving the responsibility for communication over to the individual buildings. Because we're now at a point where if somebody has a question for Mrs. Putney about scheduling, it's not helpful to come to me because I couldn't answer it. And it's a poor use of someone's time to come to me, and then I go to Sharon. What I realize is that because the bulk of the communication in the spring was from me, it made sense that people would just say, well, he's the guy. But actually, I've ended up having to spend a lot of time delegating back out to the buildings to say, could you handle this? Because I don't know, you know, exactly when recess is at a given school on a given day. And so, Andy, the answer to your question is that, that's, that whole process of communicating out is evolving now that we're in a new school year, and we're trying to find out both what do our, does our, do our individual six communities want, and what, what, how can we manage it so that we're not confusing people? It's not trying to, you know, lack transparency, it's, we're trying to talk to each other before we say anything because we want to be sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. And in a, you know, in a district with 850 staff and, you know, 4,000 almost students and that many parents, it's very important that we don't say something that then sets a little wildfire going, and we say, oh, no, no, we didn't really mean that. These days with social media, it is very hard to pull back from something once it's out there. So we're, we're trying right now to be just pretty careful about making sure we know what we're saying, and we say it consistently. So that might give the impression of, of, at the, in these early days, nine days in, of, you know, a little less, you know, constant communication. But what we've tried to say is we're erring on the side of, you can take to the bank what we say, hopefully, and not confuse people. So I think we'll get better at that over the coming weeks, but it's clearly something that we're, we've, we have identified, and we're continuing to try to work on.
And just to, to close, I think the plan sounds good because decentralizing, because everything's a little bit different, the schools are different, that certainly makes sense, and, but also the things that affect the whole district, a single place to, to do that is also good as well. I think it would be helpful, and your explanation, by the way, is a really good summary that I'm not sure that I've heard sort of synop, in a synopsis fashion, you know, talking about the plan. So I think this is really good, and what I'd like is, either the next meeting or the one after, sort of, find what your plan is to do that, because I think if we, the sooner we can be clear about the communication paths and where there are, and where to look for this, where to look for that, is it the webpage, is it a Facebook sub-page, what is it exactly? I think it'll help because the more that, the more transparency we have in terms of where to find stuff, the easier it gets for all of us, whether you're in the school board, administration, the principal, you know, whatever. So, that's, that's sort of my hope, and the sort of challenge that I give to administration is to resolve that issue as soon as you can, because I think it's going to make everybody's life a whole lot easier, so.
Thank you. We'll do it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the update. The next item on our agenda is item number six, the third review and approval of temporary emergency policy, travel guidance for students and staff.
So, thank you. So at the, so I, I missed the boat because at the meeting prior to last meeting, Board Member Schneider had been pretty clear about something that he had hoped to have in, or addressed in the new policy, and then at the last meeting, I just realized I had just completely muffed it. So what, I think what Board Member Schneider was primarily asking is for an acknowledgement that the Department of Health and Human Services has put out a universal guidelines for a lot of things related to, to COVID-19, both in the private sector and the public sector and so on. But particularly as relates to travel, there is a reference in the universal guidelines to essential travel. And in the version of the policy that you were originally given, and that I didn't fix the last time, we hadn't included that definition. So, in the second bullet, we've added the following, personal, international travel, travel outside of New England states, in parentheses, unless essential travel is discouraged, then we clarify directly from the universal guidelines from DHHS what essential travel is. And it is, essential travel is defined as travel that includes, quote, "personal safety, medical care, care of others, parental shared custody, for food, beverage or medication, or for work. Employees who travel outside of the New England states for personal or leisure reasons cannot rely on this exemption." Then, I think the question was, could we include as essential travel potentially, let's say, a category of travel that would relate to students touring colleges? The universal guidelines do not include that under essential travel. And so, I was asked to just consult with our attorney just to see whether that's something that we could or should do. The guidance there was, a board can do whatever it wishes to do, but if we start getting specific about defining more broadly something like that than the state has done, then it opens up the question, well, maybe this would be a good exception or exemption, or maybe that. And then what happens is, the, the point is somewhat diluted because you've got a lot of exceptions. And so, I would say that the legal opinion that we got was not to change and include something that isn't included in the universal guidelines. But that said, you know, it, it's the board's policy, so if it wanted to do that, you know, it has the prerogative, but I'm just sharing with you, you know, the guidance that I got when I spoke to our legal counsel. And then finally, on the back page, you just see that we have added the site And then finally, on the back page, you just see that we have added the citation, New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services Bureau of Infectious Disease Control, from which we get the definition of essential travel, so that people know, I think as Board Member Schneider mentioned, so that people understand that this wasn't just made up by the board, but that it came from a document recently developed that has a lot of weight and merit. So I offer that for you.
Andy, and then Shannon?
So for me, and thanks, Mark. So for me, the citation is what I was looking for. The other question that I had was the reference, the website reference in the first paragraph, but in looking further, the state appears to be updating that docu- that page as well as the more essential piece there. So I'm okay with that reference remaining. So from my perspective, the, the travel, the travel policy matches what I was looking for in terms of a change. I'm not sure that I was necessarily advocating for the exception methodology, although I think we did talk about that when we discussed it. But I think it would be good before we land on this policy as to what the other board members think, because we have been approached by parents saying, I, you know, going on visits or things like this. I agree that it's a slippery slope if you start putting exceptions in, because then you start creating a list, and I'll just stop there.
Shannon?
Well, I'll be using this policy to be dialing into our next board meeting, because I will be out of the state as of Thursday, and I understand the reasoning for it. And honestly, one of the feedbacks we did get from parents were about visiting college campuses, and right now, that's become the hotbed for cases in the state. So as we start, from the time we started talking about this, what we looked at as a circumstance in which we want our students to have those exposures, now that they're probably some of the worst ideas we have. UNH has about 120 active cases right now, or 150? So, you know, honestly, this, it's probably something that would not be good for our student body, so I'm hoping that we can adopt it as presented tonight, and when the board is finished weighing in, I'd be glad to make the motion.
So I agree. I think that colleges are doing a lot to do remote meetings with students. I know in the school district I'm working in, every single day, you see a list of colleges that are doing interviews remotely, so, and I understand if parents want to go to a campus, you know, we can, you can, in Nashua, they have weekly COVID tests, that you can walk in and get a COVID test, and so that, you know, they could come back with a negative COVID test and come back to school.
And from, from my perspective, I don't want this policy to do anything more or less than what the state is already, has out there as guidelines. So I don't want to be making guidelines, let's say, that would contradict what the state guidelines are, because I don't know if there's penalties for not adhering to state guidelines, or if there's other, you know, unintentional consequences, but all I really want is for our policy to be living and breathing as the state universal guidelines are updated. So I'm fine with the way the policy stands right now, with the revisions that have been made. Do I have a motion?
If you'd like, I could be glad to make one.
All right.
I offered earlier. So I move that we adopt the temporary emergency policy for travel guidance for students and staff as presented this evening.
And a second by Andy? Any discussion other than what we've already?
Just thanks for the extra work, and, and I think it will, it will serve you well.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries four zero zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda is item number seven, which is the second review of indoor air quality policy.
Yep, and so I just bring this back, for the, the second review. Perfectly understand the importance of having time to review and to internalize and so on, and so I'm happy to take, if you have particular questions, or if you want me to take anything back to legal, or, or anything, I'm happy to do whatever the board wants, or sees fit.
Shannon?
I think it's good as presented, and I hope we can just put in consent for our next meeting.
Anyone have a problem with that approach? Lori?
No, I second that.
Okay. Right, let's go ahead and, and handle it that way, on consent for the next meeting, and should anyone review it or have a question, they have the right to pull it if we need to, otherwise it'll just be on consent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number eight, which is the open school board vacancy interview date. So the interview date with the board will be Monday, September 28th, at 7:00 PM at the Merrimack High School cafeteria. We do have eight candidates that have expressed interest in being considered to fill this vacancy. The candidates are, and just forgive me if I pronounce any names incorrectly, Patricia Teton, Mackenzie Murphy, Paul Goodridge, Carl Bounas, Tanique Lenderman, Jenny Poison, Wilfrid Van Schon, Jenna Hardy. I think that's all eight. So it will be at 7:00 again, in the Merrimack High School cafeteria. We made that decision, although we won't, folks at home won't be able to hear that real time. The matter is of safety, and we just need to have a bigger space to be able to accommodate that many people, and there's only 11 folks that can be in this Matthew Thornton room, so we thought it best to move it to a larger facility. Any questions there?
Do we have?
Go ahead, Lori.
Do we have set questions? Are we, you know, do interview questions, Sinda?
So what we've done in the past is, we've asked candidates to come up. I will find a methodology, I, my intent right now is to match the state, so alphabetize the names, and then find out where that cut point is, and work through it the same way as if we were working through the ballot. And then what we will do is, we will invite each candidate up, just to be able to introduce themselves, and then what we do is, we run through questions. We'll run through a series of questions that we prepare to ask the candidates, and I typically like to ask the same questions to each candidate, so that I can compare it, but you're welcome to handle that however you'd like. And then, once we run out of questions, then we just move to the next candidate. So I'm expecting, we'll probably have 15 or so minutes per candidate, and that'll bring us to about two hours. So when I look at the time allocation, we do have that room till 10:00. We have an extra hour allocated, but I, I'm hoping that we can get through the process in two hours.
So that would be good. So I, I would recommend that we ask the same questions, that we have a set of questions, and then we have norms where we say, we're going to be asking five questions or seven questions, and you have 15 minutes, and then at the end of 15 minutes, if they've answered all the questions, great, but if they haven't gotten to one, so they have to time themselves on their answers.
Andy?
Well, the way it's worked is, what we tend to do is, is each of us comes with a handful of questions that we want to ask. It's not like we pull and create one list of questions. Usually it's, we individually have questions that we would go through the school board, sort of in order, and then, and then ask, each of us would ask the same question of each candidate, but it's not, it's not like we give them the list of questions and they start going through the list. We sort of give the opportunity to interact individually with the board members and the candidate, sort of going around the room, so to speak. That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, I agree with, I agree with Sinda, we should have the same questions. I'm just saying, because of the time factor, I think that, you know, we have eight people that, you know, just, that meeting norms on, on, on the norms, I think that would be important.
Shannon?
I'll just, since the last few appointments were when I was chair, so what we did, just as a process, was, again, we brought the candidates up, they gave an introduction, we did roundtable, and it probably took maybe five, six minutes, you know? I mean, you can't get someone that's breathy, and it's happened, you know, and then at the end of it, you know, and you can weigh that into your candidacy, if they go a little long in the tooth, but, you know, didn't add much content, that might give you what you need to know. But at the end of it, we give them an opportunity to ask us questions, and then we give them an opportunity to close. You know, just based on the conversation, why they would like to be concerned, and then on to the next one. So that's how I ran them, at least.
I think the consistency is good, and that's my view of basically managing this, very similar to how we've done in the past for open positions. So we can certainly set norms, especially given the number of candidates. And that's not to say that you may not have a different question for somebody, so somebody might say something, and then you find you want to probe a little deeper into something they said. So, you know, in general, you know, I recall in the past trying to ask many of the same questions of different candidates, but that doesn't mean I didn't have some one-off questions just based on, you know, an answer that I had that I wanted to know more about.
Andy?
So, once we get through all of the, the eight candidates, and we've asked questions and they've closed, and is it our plan to deliberate right then and there?
Yes.
And is, can you explain a little bit how you think you'll run the process? Because the budget committee had theirs, where they interviewed all of them, and then what they did is they took nomination, and they, they sort of, I, I don't think they dug deep enough, so I'm just curious to see what approach you're going to take with that many candidates, on how you want to approach.
Well, I, what I would like to do is, you know, once we, you know, deliberate, you know, we'll be open to motions. Someone wants to make a motion to nominate someone, we can vet that and handle it that way. That would, you know, would be what I would like to do.
But allow us to nominate with a second, and then discuss, and then we'll discuss on a board as whether we want to?
Correct.
Do a vote on that, or, or whatever, like that.
Correct.
The, the takeaway is, and I think part of the problem is, the budget committee was like more cut and dry, it was sort of like, here's a nomination, here's a second, they took a vote, and that was it. They didn't really discuss. I'd like to make sure that, because the board is a much more involved position, I want to make sure that we really sort of talk through amongst ourselves at the tables.
It sounds like we're aligned.
I want to make sure we have enough time to be able to do that after all the discussions, so.
Till 10:00. Yeah, so the, and then just another follow-up on that. The idea would be then that the board member that is selected would then attend the first board meeting in October, which is the fifth, and Pat Heinrich is prepared to be here as our secretary to be able to swear that person in prior to that meeting. Any other questions, comments? All right. Sorry?
She's school district clerk, that's how?
Yeah, the school district clerk, sorry. I said the wrong title.
That's right, no, that's the official.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. John Fabrizio?
John, you're live.
Thank you very much. Tonight for our consent agenda, we have one resignation, and that is Craig Maryfield, special education teacher at Master Cola, excuse me, at Merrimack Middle School. And we have one nomination, that is for Emily Bedard, special education teacher at Master Cola Upper Elementary School. That is all.
I'll entertain a motion. Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second? Lori? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. The next item on our agenda, number 10, is other. The first item is correspondence. I will go ahead, we've had a few different emails recently directed to the board. One that was recently received was regarding the banned parents not being allowed to attend home games. I, we just received that, I don't have a response to that yet, but I will work with administration, the appropriate administration and direct, oh, Shannon?
As a banned parent, if you'd like me to give a point of clarification, we received an email from Sharon Putney today, that banned parents will be allowed to have up to four immediate family members attend the game on Friday.
Okay, that's great. And I will respond back to the parent accordingly, although they probably already have that information, if Sharon had sent that to the banned parents. The other one that we've all received was a parent concerned over remote offering compared to hybrid, and concern over a child's honors, changes to the, their honors courses and their schedule. So I've worked with administration, Mrs. Putney and the superintendent, who worked with the child and the parents, so right now, the schedule is set. And then I did receive one more inquiry, specifically only to me, which was just an inquiry regarding the varsity bass fishing. I was able to get a response from Mr. Susie, that we are no longer offering that this year, and probably not into the foreseeable future, because it only affects like two or three students. So that's all. Anyone else have any other correspondence? How about comments? Anyone have any comments? None? The next one is item number 11, new business. Anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss? Seeing none? And committee reports? Shannon?
I have a couple. First was Wednesday, the 16th, Parks and Recreation met. So they are making upgrades to their office facilities to make them ADA compliant for year-round use. They went over some major upcoming projects and trying to prioritize going into budget season. They discussed the fence that they're looking to have installed at Watson Park, that would be along the waterfront because of misuse of the park, and upcoming projects at Wasserman, Wasserman the Park. On Thursday, the 18th, I ended up chairing a meeting, a regional meeting of the National School Boards Association. Having never attended that meeting in the past because of scheduling conflicts, I got to chair it, and we elected positions to the National Board for the Nominating Committee, the Government Committee, and their alternates. In, in the melee, somehow I got appointed to, elected to be an alternate, so I guess I have a little, a little side gig up there. On top of that, we do have our NHSPA board meeting this week. I know we're still addressing the continuing, or the nominating resolutions, and so if there are any there to come, I would of course recuse myself if this board did have one, as I would be on the executive committee reviewing them. And then something I would like to ask the board, if I could work with Mark on, you know, I've been asked to testify to the Joint Education Committee on school operations so far, so it will be the New Hampshire Senate and House Education Committees wanting to get their finger, like, just a checkpoint on operations, and of course, whatever testimony we can give can, can serve the greater good. I know it, the last time I testified, it was a lot of North Country, more rural areas, and I think I was probably the most densely populated board member that was at the table, and I think that would be very helpful for them to get, we'll call more of the central area that, that the COVID impact is. So I would love to reach out to Mark and see what I can do to offer good testimony.
Okay, thank you. Oh, as it relates to the committees, I just wanted to give a quick heads up while we're on this topic, that we'll look to do the assignment, reassignment of committees at the next school board meeting, which is when we'll have our full board back in place. So if you have any specific requests, or, you know, concerns regarding maybe some assignments for those of you who've been on the board before regarding what you have, or you have any thoughts, feel free to just reach out to me, and then I will draft something and to put forward to us on, in early October. And then lastly, is the public comments on agenda items. There's an empty room here, so I know we don't have any here. I wanted to see, check with Vice Chair Barnes to see if she's received any of those forms.
I have received no emails, nor have I received a form this evening in public comments.
Okay, we have no public comments this evening, so that concludes our board meeting. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest. Thank you and good night.
Motion to adjourn?
Ooh, motion to adjourn. Minor detail. Made by Andy. Seconded by Shannon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries four zero zero. Thank you and good night.
From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow- Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.